To order, this is the regular meeting of the Waterloo Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission and the, uh, thank you all for being here. The first item on our agenda is approval of the, um, agenda for this meeting. And I understand there's one change to that before we get started, which is, um, A2. Um, the applicant in that has actually been recommended for denial, but the applicant, Ruwan Inc., has withdrawn that. And so, um, before we get a motion to approve the agenda, um, what we discussed was, we still have it on our, um, agenda hearing. I don't, the, the applicant just withdrew it, so I don't know if anybody is here to talk about that, but if you want to, what we can do is just during our oral presentations, which comes up pretty quickly, it's right after our financial report. If you want to discuss that matter, you can come up then during all presentations. Any other changes?
I'd like to add a couple things on the discussions.
Okay.
Uh, one is the future scheduling for November meetings.
Okay.
And, um, a conversation about a city attorney attending our meetings.
Yeah, and we'll put that in the discussion, one, one November. And I actually had something too. I talked to one other commission member and then Noel about, I, and Jerry didn't talk to you, but about possibly putting together like kind of Planning and Zoning Commission 101, um, sometime where we could all come together in a public meeting and go through kind of the rules and regulations, um, about the Planning and Zoning Commission. When I, it does, um, when I got on the commission, I met with Noel and Eric and it was really helpful, but that was probably before I'd been through some meetings. And so I was just thinking about things from, um, from our last meeting about, um, maybe having something where we almost like kind of reenacted, here's what we do for, um, for example, uh, rezone, here's what a special permit is, kind of where it goes, whether it goes to the city council, um, or the board of adjustment, that sort of thing. I don't know if now's the time to do it when things are busy, but maybe if they quiet down here over the winter time. Um, and what I talked to Noel about was maybe, um, he suggested no, uh, Iowa state extension. So is that kind of what you were getting at for the discussion items? Okay.
I mean, that's your discussion items. I have two others.
Okay, gotcha. But the, like the city attorney?
Mm-hmm.
That was kind of one that was born out of my thought too. Do we have a city attorney here kind of during that? So, just so we know legally. Okay. And just for everybody in the audience, for the discussion, we have the oral presentations coming up early, but then the discussion items, I guess among the commission are later in the me, at the end of the meeting. Anything else?
The only other thing on number two is would be the approval of the revised minutes.
Oh, okay. Got it, okay. Anything else? So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the revisions made for, one, the removal of A2, the request from Ruwan Inc., um, uh, approval of the revised minutes of the regular meeting on October fourteenth, and then finally adding, I guess two items, if we'll kind of piggyback on each other for the second one regarding the city attorney or a discussion of kind of...
Three, three items.
Or three, okay. We'll just add that separately.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. All right, then that takes us to the approval of the revised, um, minutes of the regular meeting. Um, and those were emailed out, just for everybody in the audience, the, the minutes that were put in the, um, the agenda kind of, I think followed the agenda from last meeting, although we mixed that up because we were operating kind of in and out of a quorum, so we decided to take all the non-controversial matters first, so I think it, I don't think it changed anything substantively, just the order.
Nothing was changed other than changing the order. We, we revised them to put them in the order we actually took action on.
Okay. So let's get that motion on the table to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the revised minutes of the regular scheduled meeting on October fourteen, twenty fourteen.
Second.
Okay. It's okay.
Ladies first.
Okay. Second, um, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to our financial report, um, from Noel Anderson.
This is Anderson with staff. Uh, this is the financial report up through, uh, September thirtieth, twenty fourteen, which puts us at twenty-five percent of the year, um, for the planning department. Uh, currently our overall revenue is at eighteen percent. Our expenses are at twenty-one percent in the planning department, and then they are at fifty-eight percent in the property management department. So we're about right on schedule for revenue and expense and planning. The property management's about right on schedule even though, though we're at fifty-eight percent, it's because we're mowing. Um, obviously we have snow removal in the winter, but that's a lot of the less expensive than the mowing for the property management department, so we're right about where we should be.
Any questions? Discussion. Okay, hearing now to entertain a motion to approve the, um, September twenty-fourteen financial report.
So moved.
Thank you, a second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That then takes us to our oral presentations where if anyone would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, um, you can step forward. We just ask that you state your name and your address. And also just for everybody, if you came in late, the request from Ruwan Incorporated, um, for the, uh, truck and trailer parking located on Nevada Street has been withdrawn by the applicant, so that won't be on. So if you wanted to talk about that, you're free to, um, we just know, somebody might be here because that was the, all the notices were still mailed out, so feel free to come forward for that.
Can I get a clarification? Is it withdrawn or is it tabled or what's, yeah?
It'll be on next month. It's withdrawn for this month, we believe it'll be on next month.
Okay.
Great. Okay, and with that invite anybody to come forward and just state your name and your address, please.
My name is George Stigler and I live at forty-six sixteen William Drive here in Waterloo. I've got, uh, a couple of materials I would like to present to the commission. My presentation won't take more than three or four minutes, and so if I could step forward and give you these materials.
Yeah, please. In short, you have copies, is that copies for everybody?
No, I only need for, um, I apologize.
Okay, we'll get that to read.
This is a follow-on to our meeting of, uh, last month, October fourteenth. Before you now are statements of the Iowa law on the forums and conflicts of commissioners and whether those commissioners have the right to vote, and also two emails sent to us by Mr. Anderson. If you go to that first email, it's dated October sixteenth, and it tells us that the vote that you took on October fourteen was improper because there was not a quorum, and the quorum was lost, at least according to Mr. Anderson, through Mr. Wenland, through Mr. Anderson was, because Mr. Young abstained, that, that resulted in a loss of quorum. That's a misstatement of Iowa law. And abstention has absolutely nothing to do with a quorum, nothing to do with a quorum. And if you go to the second email, you'll see, uh, uh, an agreement with that. I, uh, outlined under that second email, the October twenty-eight email, that abstention isn't the issue. The issue now, according to staff, is that when Mr. Young participated after abstaining, he had a conflict of interest and thus the quorum was lost because of the conflict of interest. Go to that front page, you'll see section three eighty point four subsection two of the Iowa law. That is as crystal clear as you can possibly get. A commissioner who has a conflict of interest can vote, and that vote is valid unless the vote is the decisive vote. What does that mean? It means that had the vote last October fourteen been two-two, Mr. Young could have voted, but his vote would not have been allowed in terms of casting the deciding vote. Iowa law is crystal clear, a conflict of interest has nothing to do with a loss of a quorum, and that law tells you that. We're bothered with the way we've been treated in the sense that when, when we appear before the commission, we get fair treatment, but the staff seems to have some sort of a notion that, uh, it has the obligation to carry water for Robin Hood Enterprises. Mr. Anderson sat there on October fourteen for three and a half hours with absolutely no question and no statement to any of you about a loss of a quorum. It is only when Robin Hood Enterprises lost the vote that he then brought up the issue of a quorum and an abstinent or an abst, abstention, losing a quorum, and then he changes his mind in the second email to you and told you that, uh, it's really the conflict of interest. Abst, and abstention has nothing to do with a quorum, a conflict of interest has nothing to do with a quorum, and a commissioner with a conflict has every right to vote, it's just that he's, his vote cannot be the vote that pushes the issue over the edge. That's Iowa law, and you'll not find anything to the contrary in any statements made by Mr. Wenland through Mr. Anderson are simply bad statements of Iowa law. We, we simply ask to be treated fairly. We don't want to have to fight the staff, we want the staff to give us the same fair consideration that it gives to Robin Hood Enterprises. We've got a valid vote, and despite what Mr. Wenland or Mr. Anderson may tell you, that vote is one hundred percent valid. Here's, here's what I would like to have you think of. This is the perfect day for it. This is election day. I want you to imagine that candidate A and candidate B are vying for the same office, and tonight at around midnight or two AM, the auditor, the county auditor tells you that commis, or candidate A won by one hundred votes. Candidate B then calls his attorney, and his attorney then calls the auditor, and his attorney tells the auditor, "There was monkey business in wards one and five," and how do we know? Well, we committed the monkey business, and so we want a new vote because of our errors. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that you're not going to get a new vote simply because somebody violated the law and seeks to take advantage of that. Mr. Young has a whopping conflict of interest, and I don't know, I can't read his mind, but I submit to you that that's probably the reason he did not vote on October fourteen. But whether he abstained or not, the quorum is unaffected, we have a valid vote, and on December two, we'll be here taking a look at this, and if what is presented by Robin Hood Enterprises is nothing more than a warmed-over version of what was turned down on October fourteen, we will have plenty to say about that. Uh, we, we ask that, uh, the commission staff gives, uh, gives us the same treatment that they give Robin Hood Enterprises. Take a look at what this will do to the public health, to the value of property out there, and other considerations that are required, not only by Iowa law, but by your regulations. Mr. Wenland's law, as stated through Mr. Anderson, is twice wrong, and he can't, if somebody said, uh, he should be here, we would love to have him here on December second to have him tell you what his theories are. He is as wrong as can be.
Just as a quick follow-up to that, um, we were, we were concerned there might be a problem with the quorum. Uh, we were not sure there was a problem with the quorum at the meeting. Um, I was questioned about whether or not the quorum was lost, that was why I asked for the legal opinion.
Yeah. And George, yeah, no, no, please feel free to stick around, kind of during the meeting as well, so, um, and we can have Chris Wenland here later. I know, are, do you have to head out?
I have to head out, uh.
Okay.
Do you think that Mr. Wenland has to say?
Gotcha.
About it, and we'll meet on December second and pass it out there.
Okay, thanks for coming. And just to follow up on the comments, George talked about, um, I guess key in voting, just to make clear, I did not want to vote on this, I didn't want a conflict of interest. I mean, I represented the, um, the applicant there, so, um, that's what we did, but I was surprised as anybody, um, when the email from Chris Wenland came out. I still haven't talked to Chris Wenland about it, just 'cause I didn't think that was my place, that was between the city and, um, the city attorney and then the city staff, so we'll see. Regardless, I think from the applicant point of view, it'll just all be brought up and we can all discuss it on, probably at the next meeting on December second, so, if not then, probably the following meeting, so, um, everybody can have a time to discuss it. For the legal part of it, some of what George talked about was, I think he was saying he wanted me to vote, um, and I didn't want to do that as a commission member to give any appearance, I guess, of a conflict of interest to anybody else.
What he was referring to was you didn't have to step down.
Yeah.
You could've been up here abstaining from voting, that way we still would've had a quorum.
Yeah, and that was, I think some of it gets to, um, recusing as well, so that's part of the reason why I talked about, it'd be nice to kind of have that Planning and Zoning 101, um, to talk about abstaining or, or recusing, 'cause I didn't want to, um, the only other attorney I think that's been on here is Eric Johnson, he was on when I joined the board, and I don't remember at that, I think he would usually step down into the audience as well, just 'cause I didn't, I hadn't talked to any of the commission members before the vote, um, that sort of thing, just 'cause I wanted to stay away from it. So for me, it was important to go down there, um, and just get away from it as well. We were scrambling during the meeting though to find other commission members, so it wouldn't be an issue, we could actually have a clear vote. Now, the ironic thing from all of this is whether there's a vote for it or not, this is just a subdivision plan. It goes to the city council and just requires a city council, a simple majority. So that's one of the things where there's frustration with not knowing the process, it doesn't matter, so it's not like there's anything held back that'll change what the requirement, it's the city council's, um, vote that will control of whether, it's a subdivision, it's not a, um, a zoning matter. And so, that's one of the quirks that we have in the rules is that it doesn't, the effect of the vote doesn't mean a whole lot, but it's just a tough situation, I think, for everybody, um, who was up here, including me, and I know, George, for you, it was real emotional in the neighbors, but, well, in your basement and all that, so, um, what we'll do, we'll just try to work through it and be as transparent as possible, so, yeah.
I, I've kind of reconfigured my afternoon, but could I get an idea as to when Mr. Wenland might be here?
Again, I have not talked to, I haven't talked to him about this, I got the, the only correspondence I've had is the emails from Noel.
I don't think he's going to be here today. He's not going to be here. Now he'll be around, he's not going to be here.
Okay. You're more than, George, you're more than welcome to though.
No, no, I understand that, but I would ask, in fairness to us, that Mr. Wenland be present at the December second meeting.
Have you spoken to him about this?
No, I'm asking the, the, the commission to have Mr. Wenland here on December second, because he's rendered some opinions.
But you have, you have not spoken to Chris about this?
I, I've spoken to Chris once, and it was less than satisfactory, and, uh, I would like him here so that he may explain to the commission what his thinking is on this.
I'd like to thank you, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank the information. I know I, and many of us do take this home and read it, I do, I research, read, and if I have questions, then I'll call sources to find out, you know, and get it, information, find out this is correct or not, and I appreciate the researching time.
Let me tell you one, I, I apologize for this, this'll take thirty seconds, and it will tell you the difference between law and ethics. Suppose, if you will, you've got a lawyer who's probated a will, and because of the value of that estate and the work performed by that lawyer, that lawyer is entitled to a fee of twenty thousand dollars. The estate is scheduled to be closed tomorrow, November five. Today, November four, at four-thirty, the lawyer has a twenty thousand dollar mortgage coming due balloon payment, and so he pays himself twenty thousand dollars, which he is definitely due and he will receive through court commit, court permission tomorrow, except that he pays it today instead of tomorrow. What he did by doing that is one hundred percent legal. He earned the twenty thousand dollars, he's entitled to the twenty thousand dollars, but because he took it before a judge told him he could take it, he committed an ethics violation, and having violated the, not the law, but the rules of ethics, that lawyer could be reprimanded, suspended from the practice, or even disbarred if necessary. To say that something is legal is not to say that that same act committed by a lawyer is necessarily ethical. You can vote, three eighty point four tells you, you can vote if you've got a massive conflict of interest, however, if you're a lawyer, you may, you may answer to other authorities for that conflict.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, and that's why I did not want to have any just even appearance of having a conflict of interest of not voting and actually physically.
And so I simply ask to have Mr. Wenland present on December second.
Yeah, exactly. Because while, while it may be legal, I felt uncomfortable with it, and if I was another commission member, I'd feel uncomfortable with that as well, if somebody was up here with their own application, kind of saying, hey, what do you think?
This is where that 101 will come in handy, but I was understanding or believed that if we vote something down, we don't approve it, it takes a, a majority, a...
A super majority.
Super majority for zoning.
It does, yeah.
For, for zoning.
Yeah.
So that's specified in the state code, it doesn't necessarily take that for all actions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, and I know, George...
But it's still a recommendation to the council if they're aware of the Planning and Zoning Commission, looked at facts and data and made a recommendation to them, but the rezoning is the only one that would take the super majority.
Yeah, and I...
So this is an interesting thing, that if indeed the, the quorum was established by state law, state ordinance, then there's no reason that they come before this commission again on December second.
Which sounds counterintuitive that George wouldn't want that, to argue about it or just for it to go to the city council, so, yeah, and that's it. I have not, like I said, I haven't talked to Chris Wenland either, I just, I took what he wrote, um, there, and, and I kind of read it as, it surprised everybody else, 'cause I think George, I know it's really emotion, I mean, you saw how emotionally it was last time and the month before that, just with water in his basement and everything else, but I, he called me and once, I was like, well, um, you know, this isn't really a good thing for the applicant either, 'cause it throws everything kind of in limbo, um, and it doesn't really matter what the commission does here, it's all about the city council.
So, right.
Yeah.
So if indeed you tomorrow speak with Chris and bring up this argument, and he said, whoops, what I wrote in that email, I had, take a different view on it, then there's no reason for the December second meeting for Nottingham, it should go right to council.
Yeah, which would be a whole lot easier for me personally, so I don't have to recuse myself or abstain or that sort of thing.
You know, and again, just in a little bit more follow-up, and I know he was talking about ethics, I mean, I was questioned whether or not the quorum was lost, um, it really didn't matter to me whether or not you recommended approval or denial of my questioning of the city attorney, I'm not an attorney, when they start asking questions about the state code, I ask the attorney's office for an opinion. I understand the applicants are upset that it may have to go back to P and Z, it's kind of like watching sports and they have a replay, if you scored the touchdown, you don't want to see the replay, 'cause they may reverse it. They got the decision they wanted, they don't want to go back to P and Z for a potential recommendation of approval. That's, was never my intent, my intent was to answer the question about the quorum which we were asked about, so.
Yeah, 'cause it was kind, it got to be kind of a darn if you do and darn if you don't situation.
So I suppose we could just leave it that you'll follow up with city attorney and then if...
I'll follow up with him to see if he's going to change his decision.
Yeah, based on this new...
If he's not, obviously, and it's going to be on the December second one, I'll ask him if he can attend, I'm not aware of his schedule at, at this time.
Or some attorney, city attorney should be here regardless, whether it be Chris or not.
We could try.
And that's what it's going through, 'cause people did ask about a conflict of interest. I think what George has said to me is he, I finally said to him, did you want me to vote on it? And he said, I think he said, yes, I don't feel comfortable with that, that's not, heard of me, it's not heard of the other commissioners.
And he just spoke to you.
It should be...
You know, you talked about, you talked about Johnson being on here before, and actually Tom Langlis is on the planning commission back when I started, uh, you know, generally, most of the time they would stay up here and abstain, um, I think Eric Johnson was, was very good at talking about, I'm going to abstain, but here's some comments on it, and even then he was pretty brief, but, um, there was a couple times, I think, that they went out in the audience as well, so it's not uncommon.
But it's one thing to go into the audience, but it's another to come to the podium and speak for the applicant.
And that was Mr. Wenland's concern.
And that, and, and there's a concern on that as well, there was a question on the documents that I drafted, can I, yeah, what do, what do you do?
Yeah.
Um, can you not speak, um, by serving a commission?
And obviously we did everything we could to get a quorum here, thank you Leah for coming, um, it was not our intent to lose the quorum, but that was unfortunately what the city attorney's office.
That's what happens when you change your regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah. We were trying as much as...
This is Schrader with staff, not to elaborate this any longer, but we will review this with the city attorney's office, but I would just note that, you know, I haven't looked closely at the document that was submitted, but it does appear to be talking about city council, so I'm not sure if that has the same legal effect to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And the other thing that was discussed was as to whether or not it was the act of abstaining or the issue of having a conflict that caused us to lose a quorum, and that's not what the city attorney's opinion was on, it was on that act of, uh, vacating the chair and moving out into the audience and speaking on behalf of it. So it's not because he abstained, or it's not because he had a conflict of interest, that was the opinion of the city attorney's office, which is different than what that code section talks about, but we will review that with the city attorney's office and we'll see where it goes from there.
And just for full disclosure, I think when Patty called me that morning, I told her exactly what I said, I'm not going to participate in that at all, in fact, I'm going to go out and sit in the audience, and so then we were, it wouldn't have been an issue, I think, um, had we had a quorum otherwise, but, um, there was just a, I think it was a frustrating deal all the way around. If there's anything good that comes out of it, um, it'll be kind of learning the process and figuring out what we've got.
Just a final note on that, is there something in, like, how commissions should operate, is there like an actual guideline within Waterloo City, is this something we may want to put in, or is there something in writing, or is this something that they're going to look to maybe as a learning experience? So that if we ever have this happen again, we have a writing?
That's why, that's why I brought up to say, can we just call a timeout here and figure out for everybody, for Tim Jameson, for, open to the public, it can be televised and that, of let's, uh, it, we can go through kind of role-playing, all right, what do you do if an applicant, what if you want to get a variance, oh, that's a variance, bad example, but you want to build a second driveway in your house, you have to resign from the commission, you, can you still apply? Can you talk about it then? If you want the second driveway, can you abstain? Do you go down in the audience to talk about it, that sort of thing? What if Jerry wants, has a piece of land that they want to change the zoning on? Can she come in and talk, can she talk about it or not? Does she have to have to send somebody else in to do it, so, kind of those are all the questions. I, the only way I think we're going to get through it is basically sit down and talk about it, kind of work through it, so. Okay. Any other oral presentations? All right, well, we got, it looks like the only other agenda item on the, uh, on our agenda that was recommended for denial is taken off, so maybe we won't have anything too, uh, too controversial left. If there's nobody else, we move on to, um, I guess new business, and that would be starting with the hearings, we only have one rezone request, this is item A1, I'll start on this. All right, the time is now four twenty-six PM and a hearing is scheduled at this time. It's a request by Zlatko, uh, Kuduzovich?
Kuduzovich.
Kuduzovich, all right, thank you, um, to rezone zero point four nine acres from R2, one and two family residence district to C2, commercial district, to allow for commercial development of the property, located at the northeast corner of Ainsborough Avenue and Upton Avenue. Um, at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating, "I, Patty McGee, to hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on October twenty-second, twenty fourteen." Could we have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Thank you, in a second.
Second.
Okay. Um, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion to place the notice, uh, or the statement on file, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Um, we'll first hear the staff report, yes, and then, um, hear from the audience about this, but right now we'll turn over to Tim Andera for the staff report.
This is Andera's staff, proposed rezone area is located west of land that is currently zoned R2, one and two family residence district, or there is a residential property located directly adjacent to the property located at seven twenty Upton Avenue. At this time, the applicant does not have a use for the property. Uh, the rezone request is a transitioning area between Ainsborough Avenue, a minor arterial, which connects to Highway two eighteen, and single-family homes to the east. Care should be taken on the area to be rezoned, such as potential screening, so forth. Surrounding land uses include, to the north, there is vacant development land located north of Maynard Avenue, which is zoned M1. Surrounding land uses include, to the north, there is vacant development land located north of Maynard Avenue, which is zoned M one, light industrial. South is single-family residences and commercial uses, zoned R two, and C two, commercial district. East is single-family residences, zoned R two, and west is Ainsborough Avenue and light industrial uses, zoned M one. Surrounding area has a large mix of different uses, with low-density residences developed in the nineteen twenties up to the sixties. There are also light industrial and commercial uses developed in the nineteen forties, up to as recent as two thousand and seven, primarily along Ainsborough Avenue. The transition from one zoning district to another of contrasting and conflicting uses can impact more restrictive zoning districts. The intent for the ordinance is to reduce any possible harmful or detrimental influence one district may or may not have to abutting or contrasting or conflicting uses. When a C, commercial district, abuts any R one or R two district, there shall be a buffer provided through either a buffer park, or buffer wall, or buffer park. Buffer wall shall be no less than six feet in height, constructed of permanent low-maintenance materials such as concrete block, center block, brick, concrete, precast concrete, title block, et cetera. The wall shall be designed for both structural and aesthetic quality. A buffer park shall not be less than forty feet in width, and be designed and landscaped in an aesthetic manner. In this particular situation, the parcel in question is not developed, therefore, at this time, no buffering is required. However, when the area zoned for C two, commercial use is developed, the development of a proper buffer as stated within the zoning ordinance shall be assumed by the developer as the land is improved or developed. From a land use standpoint, it would appear that development along Ainsborough Avenue be for professional offices or light commercial uses due to the proximity of an adjacent minor arterial street. There is professional office and light commercial development located directly south, southwest, and west of the site in question, at the corners of Ainsborough Avenue and Upton Avenue intersection. These uses appear to buffer the low-density residential further to the east from Ainsborough Avenue and the light industrial uses on the west side of Ainsborough. Site in question is located within the Highway two eighteen corridor overlay district, which was established in the late nineteen eighties. The purpose and the intent of the design review board is to provide for orderly development of properties adjacent to Highway two eighteen. There are higher design standards for structures, along with additional landscaping requirements beyond what is normally required for multifamily, commercial, and industrial developments outside the highway corridor. The Highway two eighteen design review board has the ability to require additional design elements for new buildings or additional landscaping and screening. The portion of the property that the applicant is not requesting a rezone would be exempt from design review board review, as it is zoned for one and two family uses. The main parcel would be approximately ten thousand square feet in size, so would allow for a one or two family house to be built. Staff believes that with the site being located within the highway corridor overlay district, proper safeguards are in place to ensure that a new development within the commercially zoned area is thoroughly reviewed through a design review process by the Highway two eighteen design review board. Staff recommends that the request to rezone from R two to C two, commercial district, be approved for the following reasons. Site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscaping, screening, et cetera. Would not appear that rezoning the land to C two would have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. Three, the request is located within the primary growth area and can be served by the extension of existing utilities in the area. Four, the site is located within the Highway two eighteen corridor overlay district, which has additional design guideline standards for new construction, building additions, and parking lots, along with additional landscaping and screening requirements. The rezoning to C two, commercial district, would match other portions of land zoning along Ainsborough Avenue to the south. The C two designation would not appear to be problematic in terms of permitted uses either, due to the safeguards in place for buffer distances required for any adult or liquor license uses, which would be prohibited in this location.
Thank you, any questions for staff?
I have one, this is Thorne's very, there's a petition being passed.
Yes, I, yes.
And help me understand, I counted twenty-one signatures.
Okay.
What?
I have not viewed the.
You, October thirty first, and you just got it?
We just got it.
Just handed to you, so do you know how many, did you give notice to those within two hundred and fifty feet?
Yes. Yeah, and that's in the staff, in the report.
But how many? I'm trying to get at the number, what percentage that signature, yeah.
This is Schrader with staff.
They just got it, they might have had a chance.
What do you can do right now?
There were twenty-eight property owners that received notice. I'm not sure if all of the individuals on the petition are within the two hundred and fifty feet, so I don't know, you know, from a percentage if it maps up. I know that they did provide, they used our map that we provided that shows the two hundred and fifty foot notice boundary, and I think tried to identify the individuals that they have, that are on the petition. So I think they are within the two hundred and fifty feet. So it probably, we'll have to do some math, because it's, it's, it's not a percentage of the number, it's a percentage of the area that the property owners within two hundred and fifty feet own.
Area by acres?
Mm-hmm.
Land.
Not, not parcels.
Right, twenty percent of land by area, yep, is what will kick in the supermajority vote. So we'll have to calculate that, but just based on the, the map, you know, if that, that map is accurate based on the petition, it looks like it probably would hit twenty percent.
Yeah.
The applicant, the individuals that submitted the petition are here, so they might, I don't know if they calculated that as well, but.
Thank you.
I have a question, I know C two, there's a little bit more, and I think like auto sales and things that would fall under C two, what other categories just briefly could possibly go in there for C two?
I can get turned to it here in just a second. Okay, maybe. Principal permitted uses in the C two include an adult use, but adult uses require a special permit and a six hundred foot buffer from residential, and it certainly will not meet that six hundred foot buffer. Alcohol sales uses, but alcohol sales uses that are non-limited uses require either a two hundred and fifty or six hundred foot buffer, which this site would not meet. Animal hospital or vet clinics, automobile, motorcycle, trailer, farm implement establishments for display hire sales, that's the auto sales lot. Ballrooms and dance halls, billiards, parlors and pool halls, bowling alleys, clothes drying or dyeing establishments, commercial baseball fields, contractor business, including carpenter, cabinet shop, plumbing and heating shop, roofing shop, sheet metal shop, sign painting shop, and similar uses provided there is no outside storage of equipment. Hotel, kennel, although a kennel has to have a two, two hundred and fifty foot setback for any outsized, exercise runway. At least five hundred feet from any residentially zoned property, so it wouldn't meet that requirement. Lawnmowers, lawnmower repair shop, lumberyard, mini storage through special permit. Pet shop, printing shop, restaurant, or other similar service and retail businesses not included on the above list, subject to the administrative review.
Anything in C one?
And really, if you look at page five in your packet, that zoning map, the entire rest, the entire portion of Ainsborough to the south on that east side is zoned C two, so that was why we thought it fit in with that area, and of course, there's some automobile repair places right across the other side of Ainsborough. So again, we thought that the uses that could be allowed there, with the distances not being met for the alcohol and the adult uses, would seem to be compatible to what's out there now.
I have a question for staff, why was there not a requirement for a P zone kind of within this as well?
We definitely looked at that, again, with the rest of the corridor just being a regular C two, and with it being within the Highway two eighteen corridor, we didn't think we needed the CP. A lot of times, we do recommend the CP where you're transitioning from commercial to residential. The other reason, besides the Highway two eighteen corridor, also is the fact that they're leaving that approximate ten thousand square foot lot as a residential lot to be developed between that and exist, most of the, majority of the existing residences there. So again, we thought that there was a built-in, new residential lot that someone, building on that lot would obviously be aware of the area being zoned commercial next to it when they build, and there would be some kind of a buffer screening and all that required as part of Highway two eighteen.
I have another question regarding, so walk me through the, the map we have showing here, on the west is right of way that they're obtaining from, is that correct? Or is that just property they own that's already zoned C two?
It's already zoned C two.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that far, that kind of that first rectangle.
Mm-hmm.
That says the C two at the bottom left of it is already zoned C two, so they're requesting to rezone the hatched area.
Yeah.
From R two to C two.
And I don't see what the depth is of the lots, but if I look to the south, and where the, you know, satellite company and monuments, you know, it seems to have a similar depth. Is setbacks going to be the same for, you know?
You can see a little bit, you can see a little bit more, there, that yellow line is where the C two goes over and goes down the alley essentially, so it's, it's, it's intended to match, yeah.
Yeah. Are the setbacks the same as, as they are to the property to the south, or have those changed from, you know?
They'll be very similar, you have some advantages when you're next to an alley, you can count half of the alley width as a setback, so theirs will actually be a little bit further from where there was an alley next to it. At the same time, it's set up to match to that right side of the alley, so depending upon how they would lay it out as well, if it's all developed as one large parcel, the zoning ordinance would see Upton as the frontage, because it's a narrow dimension on a corner lot. So the east side would be a side yard setback, generally about five feet for zoning requirements. In the two eighteen design review board, you'll have larger setbacks, plus a lot of them will go ten foot setbacks, because they want to meet building code requirements for firewalls. And again, depending upon what kind of approvals would come out of the Highway two eighteen design review board, they could require a larger setback there to have a little bit more screening and landscaping between the commercial and the residential zone.
You talked about an alley, is there an alley, I mean, I see an alley to the east, but.
There's an alley to the south is what I was referring to, sorry, to match up with where that east boundary line is. On this particular area to be rezoned, there's not an alley touching that. There is an alley further to the east on the land to remain residential.
Mm-hmm.
We are working with the city attorney's office on that. There's a drive that's been used for years and years and years there that's not exactly matched up with where the alley is platted at, but obviously, it's needed for some access points to the residents to the east and north there. So we're working with them on some possible solutions for that.
But the property lines to the west and the east would have a five foot setback?
To the east, they would, to the west, along Ainsborough, that's a, it'd be another frontage.
Okay.
So it'd be half the normal front yard up, Upton. In the C two, I think that's twelve and a half, or, because I think it's a twenty-five foot setback, if I remember right, maybe it's twenty, it depends on.
Okay, thank you.
Noel, do we know what the property is going to be used for?
We do not, I don't know if Kirk or anyone is here.
Yeah, is here, but I noticed that too, in the packet, it said there was not necessarily proposed use, yeah. I guess before moving on, I'll put it up, just another question for staff as you're looking through it, get some, what we've already talked about today, but basically figuring out what their process and procedures are. If they're, this is a rezone, so a petition does affect it at city council, right?
Correct, if.
Does that matter what we do here? Should we as zoning commissioners just vote what we, I mean, obviously, you take it into account that the neighbors are opposed to it, or certain percentages are.
So the, for the city council to approve rezoning, it takes a simple majority.
Okay.
If there is an opposition petition submitted of over twenty percent of the area within two hundred and fifty feet, then it requires a supermajority. Or if the planning commission recommends denial, then it requires a supermajority.
Okay, so what, if we recommend denial is a supermajority, if we recommend approval, but it's determined that they have twenty percent, it's still a supermajority, okay.
Yeah, I think you stated it best, obviously, you want to take into account why there's opposition and things like that, but obviously, you want to vote what you think is proper.
Okay, got it.
That's, that's the thing that's frustrating to me, this is the second petition that we've gotten, and all they say is we're against this, but tell me why.
Yeah.
Give me your thinking, because I, I just have a really hard time supporting when we get petitions that don't have any reasoning behind it, or they're not stating.
Yeah.
You know, and that helps us to give insight as to how people are being affected by our decisions.
And that's why it helps, with the audience, if, if there's anybody here that signed it or presented this, please step forward. Any, are there other questions now for staff? Okay, if not, we'll go to public comments. If there's anybody here that would like to speak for or against this, please step forward, just state your name and your address. So, no, that's all right.
My name's Kirk Ashleben, I'm with Keston Associates, we're the one professional firm that did the survey work and made the application for the client. Client is here. Blacko is the father of the two boys that owned the property. This has been an issue with this piece of property for quite a while, if you look, what's already been zoned C two from previous, prior to when the DOT acquired the property. It actually went to the center line of what's now Ainsborough. They took the part they wanted for a right of way, and what was left was not sufficient C two zoning to build anything on. And so that's why we've matched the east line of that alley to the south as the limit for what we're requesting to zone C two. Yes, there has been opposition to this in the past period, they didn't want anything in there. My comment would be is, why did they bother selling the property private? They didn't want anything built there in the first place, so at this point in time, it's just a matter of, okay, can we have the C two? Then we'll take a look at splitting the property and deciding who actually wants to put what on that property within those guidelines.
So at this time, the person that is buying this has not made a determination what they want to use this land for?
They have not made a determination what they want to use it for, this is just more or less a marketing tool. Okay, can we have the zoning, then we'll take a look at what, we'll expend the effort to decide what we're going to put in there.
This is Tack, along with what Carol said, so it sounds like right now, if nothing is done to this, it's basically, you can't do anything with it because of the size. You would need to have that C two, so that you could actually put something there, otherwise, it's just sitting there, is that correct?
That's correct, there is no, there is not sufficient space for that to be buildable, the C two. And my comment would be is, I don't think you're going to get, you're not going to get anybody that wants to have a house on Ainsborough, not in that location anyway. I know one of the objections that's been put to that was regarding utilities, and that is not an issue, some would have it, there is water available across the street on three, on three sides, including Maynard to the north. Ainsborough's on the west side, and Upton's on the south side, so yes, but that's fairly typical of any development, you're going to, part of the development's going to have to go across the street to get the water. Sanitary sewer for gravity feed is going to be, will not be economical to produce, just because of the distance we'll have to cover to get to it. But there is a manhole at the west end of the alley that runs east-west through the block east of us, and current development procedures, a lot of people go, when they can't have gravity feed on their sanitary sewer, automatically go to grinder pumps, so-called force maiming. And that would work on this site for both a commercial development and the residential development between, that's being left. I don't know if you've got any questions about that, what a grinder pump does.
Okay, hearing done, anybody else in the audience? Like to speak for or against this, please step forward and just state your name and your address.
My name's Jeff Armstrong, I live at seven twenty Upton Avenue, the house that's right next door to this property. I said, I'm with the citizens that we've all signed the petition to say, no, we didn't want to let the rezoning go through. There's a couple of reasons. Number one, no, he did not state what he wanted to use it for. He said, okay, so he's not going to come forth, he's not going to finish out that application and tell us, okay, this is what I really want to do with it. He wants to. He wants to see about getting his rezoned, and then he's going to state, oh, okay, now I got my rezone, now I can do what I want. Well, of course, he's got to follow the guidelines that Mr. Schroeder pointed out. I said, I understand that. Can't get a liquor, you can't, you know, whatever, bars. Yeah, the sanitary sewer, his sewer is going to be tough. He's going to have to put the left in. I guess our neighborhood is already unindutiated with traffic. We've got plenty going up and down Upton, and we're just residents. I said, now we're going to add more business along this, Upton to Ainsborough. I said, we're going to add more traffic. We're going to lose, we believe we're going to lose property value by adding more commercial. We believe that, I guess, we just didn't feel we needed more commercial right there, right next to all these residential houses. Yeah, I know what, I understand that going down Ainsborough, that's a lot of commercial. I said, that's what it was intended to be for. That's what Ainsborough has always been, is commercial. The properties that is in question, that is empty right now, the lot, in times past has been commercial. Had that church, had a, you know, places for, to use for, what was it, a something escapes me, sorry. But anyway, that, that, but right now, I said, yeah, it is, it is zoned, the R one, R two, we'd like to keep it that way. We like our little neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, step forward and just state your name and your address.
My name is Edes Kuduzic. I'm one of the owners of the property. We have owned the property for the last couple of years. We bought it with intentions to build a car lot there. In the meantime, we bought another property, so it's been just sitting. And basically, we're just paying taxes on the property. The property hasn't been used for nothing other than paying taxes, moving rest, and the gentleman that just stood up here, and they're using our property for the alley. So we're not coming there and trying to build nothing extreme. All we want to do is build something similar to the building that's next to it. Because I think the land should be put to use for something. It shouldn't be used just to pay taxes and move rest. So, but not really sure what we want to do right now, but probably a car lot or something similar to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Tack, and I have a question on that, because I hear both sides, and my thoughts when I look at it, since there is required screening and buffering, and we want to preserve residential, I would think having a building there with the requirements would kind of more give you that division, like those are houses to the east versus looking out into a straight highway. So I can see benefits and then also being able to use that, and even if you have a car lot, wouldn't there still be requirement for the screening, so you're not looking at cars? So I mean, that's just my opinion. I really appreciate, you know, the value of keeping that residential, but I see, just personally speaking, I can see there could be some benefit since there are pretty much some good restrictions on what would go into there, because that has been an issue, and our commission is, you know, I don't want a bar in our neighborhood, I don't want this and that, and there are quite a few for that area, but I personally say that could be good for both of you. You could use a property, and you said not just pay taxes on it, but, you know, bring something and also put a screen so that it's not just the highway in your houses, but it would bring it more into a division between Ainsborough and this is residential. I mean, that's just how I see it, and I have a friend that lives on Upton, so I'm familiar with the area. She lives to the west, and it is pretty heavy industrial, and that's M one over there, so I think what they're trying to do in this case is that developing that, that could actually maybe help your area, and as far as property values, maybe speak with a realtor, or you have? Please do, yeah, because that's what, we're trying to get everybody's information and make a good decision.
I'm Allison Armstrong. I, I live at seven twenty Upton. And we went through this before with Noel Anderson when he was down the pole. Past years, it has been wanting to use for a car lot. This property has went for, they wanted to rezone it as a C two, your, your planning zoning was going to do that with putting it as a C Z with restrictions, so we were very surprised that Noel said, you know, we'll just do it out of C two. Now, we, we're not opposed necessarily to having anything there, like my husband said, but a car lot, we do not want there. We've had through the past years that people coming and bought that property, they throw cars on there. This gentleman here, they have put cars there, they have put semi-trailers there. By code, you, you can't do that. He has been fined, code enforcement has fined them over and over. He has come to us and told code enforcement, Maria, code enforcement, which planning zoning knows this, that he, he has said, I have money, it's my property, I can do what I want. You don't want to live next door and have cars parked there and have the alarms going off because you got, it's nighttime and somebody's coming to break in the cars and steal their stereos and stuff. There's nobody on the property, there's nobody to watch. You try laying there in bed, who do you call? You know, we don't want this in our neighborhood. He, he, you know, people like that, they're not good neighbors. They're not, they don't maintain, they, they think they can do what they want. We would work with somebody on the right thing that, you know, something that would go in there. I think that one time, who was that, Mr. Blake, was it? And I believe that you surveyed for, for him maybe? We've got papers at home, but that was going to go, they said maybe a mini storage unit or something, and it would run along, along there. We said, okay, fine, but you also got to realize you're looking at this map, if you're not familiar with the area, all these residents, ours included in there, we're at a higher elevation. That piece of property drops way down. So what you put there, if it, if, if screenery and buffers, and which Noel knows all this and stuff, this is, you're into a whole new ballgame, you know, if you got to hide in the screenery and everything, you know, there, like you said, there's regulations you got to go by, and and we know all this. It's not that we're opposed to commercial, we're opposed to commercial C two without any restrictions, of course we are. We don't want car lot over there. We got enough empty places here in Walooa.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak for or against?
Yeah, I live at seven eighteen Upton, Chester Schuler, and I'm just across the street from Armstrong's. And we, like we said, we wouldn't mind anything but a car lot. We've got fifty some car lots in Cedar Falls and a lot of the used car lots, and we don't need anymore.
Thank you, sir.
I would note as staff and I think Eric has a zoning ordinance, they couldn't put a car lot there without a building now. That was one of the changes we had made in the zoning ordinance. They'd actually have to have a building on there to have a car lot there. We don't allow satellite lots anymore.
What constitutes a building?
I don't know if it's defined that well in there. It'd obviously have to meet building code requirements, we'll have to have a bathroom and things like that, so it could be a, probably a smaller building, but it'll have to meet requirements for that.
Would the building be the part of the buffer between residential and?
Obviously, obviously you could situate it so that the building is, is to the east to, you know, because they probably want to gain some of the the frontage for their car displays on Ainsborough, if that's what they end up putting there, but it'll have to, you still have to have the required landscaping with a wall and things like that. And, you know, they noted, we're kind of talking about the buffering a little bit, that we had recommended a conditional zoning before. And there's been a lot of past attempts on this, to rezone this site. Some of those past rezoning requests have gone all the way over to the east property line, not leaving kind of that box area there as a, as kind of a buffer residential lot, so. If they would have requested to go all the way over to where the residential was along Upton, we definitely would have went with a CP or something like that. Again, we thought that they were leaving a good amount of space for a new development to occur in there as a residential that would be aware of this commercial zoning. And at ten thousand square feet, you could actually put a.
The land should be put to use for something. It doesn't have to be a car lot, but I just don't think it should be sitting as a vacant land. I mean, I understand it's beautiful, nothing's been built on there for years, nothing's been built ever, so they just want to use it as a view. But I mean, if they like it that much, I mean, I think they should just buy it from us, you know, and then I have to worry about anybody building anything down the road. If it's that big of a problem, but like I said, as you can see, they're using our land as their driveway, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Somebody have anything they'd like to add in the discussion?
This is Morrison, question for staff.
Yeah, from commissioners.
Noel, does the applicant own both rectangles, not just the yellow one, but the other one to the side of it? The part that's already C two. They own all three pieces that we're looking at.
Correct, yes.
Everything in dark black, right?
Yes, yep.
Right, and then in the hypothetical scenario of not a lot with a building, a building to be defined by some kind of structure, would that require pavement?
Yes.
For parking? It couldn't just be gravel or mud or?
No, it would require hard servicing.
Right.
And I have a question about that, in regards to the sound ordinance and having alarms on the car, how does that work? So I know after ten PM, there's sound ordinances, is there anything that kind of, I mean, I don't know, I appreciate, it's hard as commissioners, because we, we try to go by what we have in front of us, and I'm not saying what you're saying is not correct, because you live there and you know, but we're up here, and we're just getting this now, so I don't know if there's anything either valid or a comparison, but when you mentioned that there's problems with car alarms going off, is there an example of that, or, because I?
And that's a tough one, I mean, because obviously, I'm guessing a car alarm probably does violate the sound ordinance. At the same time, I don't think people are purposely setting off their car alarms, so I don't believe the police department's probably ticketing them for that. They're probably glad they're going off because someone's either messing with the car, and obviously that'd be something the applicants would want to look at in terms of how they would set up their lighting system and all that to try to deter any kind of theft or vandalism on the site. Obviously, they don't want that either, because that's vandalizing their property, so.
Have you taught possibly? Have you met? Have you had discussions on?
We've had discussions, but we didn't go to the right ones. And it's a car lot, we, we don't do car lots, we have.
Could you, could you come to the mic, please? Thanks.
We don't do car lots. We've got a car lot on the Broadway, five eighteen Broadway, and there's a house right next to it. We've been there for the last two years, we never had any problems. So, I mean, I don't know why that would be such a big deal. But like I said, this is not a final thing that we're pushing for is a car lot. We just want to build something on there.
Sure.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from commissioners? Okay, if not, just, I think probably for ease, it's best to start with a motion to approve, that's what I think. First, we got to vote to close the hearing. And so we do that by, by motion, motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, so now discussion or action for the commission? And again, the recommended motion is to approve, it's up to whatever you want to do. I think usually it's easiest for record, kind of voting yes or no, vote to approve. It's just my thought. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the request to rezone from R two, one and two thousand resident district to C two, commercial district, to be approved for the following reasons that staff has listed, one through five.
Thank you. It's moved and seconded, or, and a second, please.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And further discussion from the commission members? Okay, and just for the audience, it sounds like we're still working on the twenty percent rule as to what this means for the, for the city council. I mean, in a lot of ways, it'll be up to the applicant taking it forward there. Should we do a roll call vote, or? Yeah, okay.
Roll call?
Start, yeah.
Tackit?
Yes.
Thornsbury?
Yes.
Gufferson?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Mehe?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Buckles?
Yes.
Motion carries. But again, it'll be up to the city council with the commission and everything else, so.
Can I just have a suggestion on that? If there's evidence or a thing, that's helpful. I'm not saying, but based on what I've seen, I, it might be easier if there's some concerns to have something available to them, because I know that for myself, it's easier to have something in hand as far as the reason why, and it hears why to substantiate any claims. And I'm, again, that's not against, I mean, I think it should be developed, but I think for both parties, that's something they may want to consider is bringing something, show, I've, I've been a good steward, I've been a good car owner. This is our concerns, is what we've noticed, that's why some of our meetings go long, is because we do read them and look at them, and it's easier to have something in front of us about that.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Yeah, and there's always going to be time for public comment, even as it goes to the city council too, so stay involved in the process.
Point on this, that building to the south, on the other side of Upton, that now is a radio, satellite.
Okay, got it.
Mine back to store. That building was originally built spec, the businesses that are in there now weren't there when they.
Got it, okay, thanks, Kirk. All right, the next item on our agenda, again, A two, the request by Rowan Incorporated has been withdrawn. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this right now?
I don't think that's a filter, is it?
It's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, yeah.
No, okay.
They should have.
Oh, got it, okay. All right, so you're just leaving this out?
I'm just leaving this here.
I'm taking, bear with me, I'm taking note.
Sorry.
Okay. Oh, for the other ones, okay, I got you, I'm sorry. All right, next on the agenda then is a special permit, and this is, it's the third item on our board packet for action, it's B one, that starts on page seventeen, and this is a request by Paul, I'm sorry, Raul Andre, for, did I get that right? Okay, for a special permit to allow for legalization of a single-family home converted into a two-unit dwelling and the property zoned R three, multifamily residence district located at five thirty-two Independence Avenue. And right now, again, this is up for a special permit. We don't open this as a special.
Nope.
Okay, gotcha. And so now we'll, you're in the staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The applicant is requesting a special permit to legalize the illegal conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-unit dwelling. At the October fourteen, two thousand fourteen Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the request was tabled to allow for the applicant to change the request from a three-plex to a duplex. The home is currently a three-plex, but the applicant has indicated they would be willing to change the home to, into a duplex. Staff would note that the home would still not meet density requirements for a duplex, but the home is not exceeding the requirements to the extent as if it were to remain a three-plex. Staff believes the removal of the front yard parking and curb cut, the side yard driveway area, and orderly parking in the rear of this property will give the, will give it a residential yard appearance instead of a multifamily parking lot look. The rest of the yards on the back, on the block have drive parking areas and or garages at the rear near the alley. If the property were to maintain a similar appearance, the difference of the required seven thousand two hundred square feet and seven thousand square feet difference would be viewed as a minimal difference. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a special permit to allow for the legalization of the conversion of a single-family home into a duplex located at five thirty-two Independence Avenue be approved for the following reasons. The property is very close to the density requirements to allow for a two-family conversion with a difference of seven thousand two hundred square feet required and a seven thousand square feet being provided. The city sees a high-density multi, multifamily conversions as potentially having a negative impact on lower-density neighborhoods, and the city is aware of previous illegal conversions in the past, even before current owners in many cases, and intends to review each case on its own merits for compatibility to surrounding legal residences. Subject to the following conditions, the curb cut and approach on Independence Avenue be removed and restored to a curb and grassy area, the gravel parking drive area be removed from the front and side yards and restored to a grassy area, and that the gravel parking area be removed from the rear as well, except for an area that is designated for four to six parking stalls for the two-family conversion, and the address numbers are placed on the front of the home to indicate two units in the building.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
This is Tack, and I do have a question. When I read through this, I guess I'm a little confused. I thought last month we established that it would fit the legal requirement to become a duplex, just not a three.
It's a three-plex, yeah.
Three-plex, yeah, but this says on here, if you looked at general description, requesting a special permit to legalize the illegal conversion of a single-family into two-unit, which we talked about last week, and it says that the request does not meet density requirements per family for the lot. I thought if it went to a duplex, it would, so is this referring to the original standing as it is now, is it three? Because I thought that was why we gave them some grace to pull back and. Because I thought that was why we gave them some grace to pull back and come back as a duplex, because I thought it would fit the density if it was a duplex.
It's close.
Yeah, that's why I meant it was close, but would it still fit?
It's still slightly under for what is required for a duplex.
Okay.
I remember, um, the conversation that that statement was made, in that it would be like Moxnicks, not that.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, any further questions for staff? All right, if not, embedding the audience, would like to speak for against this, yeah, please come forward to state your name and your hours.
I'm Ms. Lorraine Andrade, and I live at 1503 Essex Drive. We are delighted to have another shot at this, and we will do the duplex, that's not an issue. We'll go ahead and take, put the curb in, fix the front, and if we could get a compromise with the, the parking, the driveway, if we could go like half of the side yard, uh, otherwise, the, the people that rent the upstairs, their only access to the house, to their apartment, would be through the front door. And if they're hauling groceries, laundry, and kids, that's a long, from the alley all the way to the front. That's, that's a pretty long hike. If we could put half driveway, just for the, that apartment, and the rest of it, we would do grass. And if you didn't want the view of the driveway through, through half of the yard there, the backyard, or the side yard, we could put up a privacy fence, so it wouldn't even be viewed from Independence Avenue. Uh, but the people upstairs would be able to bring their vehicle up closer.
This is Andrade, have you seen the recommended, the conditions?
I talked to Adrian.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is how we plug what you're proposing in, I mean, not saying we'll approve it, but just, what you're talking about now, what would that go to of the four conditions that are listed?
The second one.
Well, right now, there's a easement, it goes from Independence to the alley. And we would get rid of the front and bring the entire front yard grass like they want. And then, half of the side yard, too, but if we could bring the driveway from the alley, leave it in the back for the bottom people, they would be fine, they have access to a back door, which is in the backyard. And just put.
Jared, you?
Some of it closer up, so the people wouldn't have to carry their groceries and their laundry and all of that. That is a long, especially in the winter. I mean, we would still comply to most everything you want, if we could just get a little bit of driveway up on the side still. Like you said.
Can you narrate this, no, what you're, uh? Yeah, the staff recommendation. Put you on the spot.
Wouldn't it say that the gravel parking driveway, this is number two, be removed from the front yard, and?
Half of the side yard.
Half of the side yard.
Which half?
Be restored.
Yeah, I don't know what's, yeah, I don't know what side, what side of the side yard.
Well, where the driveway is, where the car is parked there, that's all gravel, it goes from alley to street, Independence Avenue.
So, from the gravel south, from the, from the car south?
Yeah, we would go ahead and just leave a little bit of driveway up there for the apartment upstairs, and then the rest of it would all go back to yard.
Go back to grass.
And if you don't want to see the driveway, you wouldn't see much of it, oops, we're more than willing to put up a privacy fence, so it would look like just a backyard.
Got it.
But the backyard will still go ahead and, whatever needs to be done. But if we could just get a little bit of leeway for the people upstairs, that would be great. Other than that, and we do plan on putting a retaining wall from the sidewalk, it would look nice. It would brighten it up a lot. I mean, if you want.
So, by my understanding, I write, and I won't show up on the screen, no.
She should, you should come over here, yeah, so you can see.
The magic screen doesn't work.
There you go.
Stretch.
From that car there, you can kind of see the center peak line of the roof, from that point back, he's asking to keep from there forward, is what could, he's asking that be located, remove that part.
Right. Remove that, put all that new yard and grass. It would just make it so much easier for the people upstairs.
Got it. Okay.
Would, would you limit that going back from there, as it came back to the alley line? Could you limit that to like a double driveway width? I guess part of our intent was to get a, established backyard like you'd see in the other yards. Would that be enough parking back there, then, for the units, if you had a double driveway width?
If the, the way the alley is, the alley's here, and then there is parking there, and then there's a backyard, but that easement there, the driveway that goes all the way through, that's all gravel. Now, what do you, we're willing to work with you there, whatever you want.
This is kind of the parking area, and then this is the driveway between the two, that he's questioning if it could be narrowed down to about 20 feet, I don't know how wide from here to here is now, but he's saying to keep it more of a residential feel, that can be narrowed down to 20 feet.
Sure, we could go ahead and do that. I don't know how much room is that, I don't know the dimensions of the backyard, I guess.
So, we'll say, okay, so say 20 feet in number three, roughly the rear 20 feet of the lot to match.
Fifty.
I'm sorry, fifty?
Fifty feet wide.
That's probably about what it is now, it's probably about.
Oh, a 50-foot lot, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So, for line two, we're saying half of the side yards?
Is that acceptable to staff?
And then on line three, we're changing that to 20 feet?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Well, ma'am, if, if it's approved, yeah, you might want to follow up tomorrow, on all that. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this? Okay, thank you. All right, um, any further questions for staff and the Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion to, uh.
I make a motion that we approve, subject to the conditions stated with the two changes we've been debating. Item two, half of the side yards, item three, making that width 20 feet, to make it look more like a natural driveway.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, to approve the request, subject to the conditions, what the amendments is known. Okay, any further discussion among Commissioners?
My only comment is, I, you know, back when these were, when the code changed, you know, we had the, you know, uh, it was my impression that the staff was going to take kind of a hard line on, um, allowing these, or, or, or firm denial on most of these, if they didn't meet the requirements, so, I kind of have a hard time saying yes to some, no to others, and, uh, you know, unless it meets all the requirements, um, you know, I wish, you know, I wish that we could, you know, allow everything, but that's just kind of my stance, I mean, you know, where do you draw the line?
Sure.
This is Summer's favorite, we were told last week that every, if it's an R2, that you could have two structures, and so that's why we asked them to, we tabled it, so they could go from three to two.
Okay.
So, they're in alignment with the code.
Yeah, this is Anderson with staff, that was one of the main criteria we looked at, is in the R1 or R2 district, um, any district, you can have a one or two-family home, and so those are, seem to be a lot more compatible, just by the structure of the zoning ordinance, whereas the R3 is the first one, where you can start to have a three-plex, and we really think, you know, a three-plex really kind of starts to change from a, a one or two-family home, because then you start having a larger parking area, so it's more of a parking lot than it is a driveway. Um, so we really thought that the, they were only off by 200 square feet, um, for the lot size in this area. And looking at the layout, um, with the removal of the curb cut in front, it matched kind of the, the existing residential feel in that area. We really thought that this one looked a lot more compatible, um, and since it was just a two-family and is allowed in the, the normal district, it would work.
I would also add that last month, there was quite a bit of Commission support for allowing the exception for the triplex, and so I think that this is a tremendous road to compromise, where a month ago, some of us were leaning towards an exception. So, I think this is a huge compromise, as it is already.
And I think in the responsibility of the landlords, that it's nice to have landlords like yourself, that because you brought it to get a building permit to do some repair work, I mean, this is commendable, and there's a lot that don't. So, I think that was everything, too, is that you're doing everything you can to make it look well and make the repairs, and again, I think it was well commendable.
Thanks. Thank you, all, all good points. Um, any further discussions? Okay, if not, do you want to take a roll call vote, or just voice vote? I guess we'll go voice vote, all those in favor of the motion, um, as specified, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, and could just follow up if you see, to make sure we got it all squared away. All right, um, the next item on our agenda is a plat, um, this is a request, this is item C1 in our board packet, and it starts on page 27, and it's a request by Robson Homes, Inc., uh, for the, um, uh, seven-lot final plat of Prairie Meadows Estates, generally located east of Morning Dove Drive, Waterloo. First, we'll hear the staff report.
This is Chris West from the staff. Uh, the request will not appear to have a negative impact on the area, the requested lots would extend residential development in the particular area. Uh, the request will not appear to have a negative impact on traffic conditions. Vehicles would access the lots by an extension of Morning Dove Drive, and also from streets labeled Darby Drive, Grindstone Circle, and Omaha Avenue. Said streets, uh, are to be developed and dedicated to the city for public street use, all roads are classified as local streets. Uh, the site is zoned R3 RP Planned Multiple Residence District, a majority of the area was recently rezoned to R3 RP on June 23, 2014. Um, to the north, um, there's S1 Shopping, uh, Center District. To the east, there's a multiple residence district, to the south is A1 Agriculture District, and to the west is R3 RP Planned Mul- Multiple Residence District. Uh, the lots will be required to meet residential standards for drainage. Track A is shown on the northeast corner of the plat as a storm water management area for the development. There is a 15-foot drainage easement in, uh, in between lots five and six, along the rear of lot seven, and also along the rear of lot two. There is a 20-foot drainage easement in the center of lot one. Uh, single-family homes and two-family condos have been developed to the west over the last couple of years. Uh, as far as the flood plain, the area in question is not located within a flood plain, as indicated in the Federal Insurance Administration's flood insurance rate map, community number 19013CO304F, dated July 18, 2011. The lots in question are located on agricultural ground, green space would be retained to the northeast corner, known as Track A. As far as utilities, uh, the final plat shows a 10-foot utility easement along the front of all seven lots, and an eight-inch sanitary sewer connection of Morning Dove Drive, running through the center of each prospective street. Storm sewer and water main lines are shown within the proposed streets as well. There are, there is a 20-foot drainage easement located within the center of lot one, and 15-foot drainage easements located between lots five and six, along the rear of lot seven, and also along the rear of lot two. Track A is located in the northeast corner of the plat and contains a total of point, uh, 0.94 acres. Uh, gas and storm sewer lines are shown within the utility easements throughout the southerly and westerly portions of the proposed streets. Easements shown on Prairie Meadows Estate final plat appear to be consistent with easements in adjoining subdivisions to the west. Um, the future language map designates this area in question as mixed commercial, or actually, uh, high-density residential. The request would be in compliance with such designation. The site is located within the primary growth area as designated on the growth area map within the comprehensive plan. Final plat consists of seven lots, containing approximately 20.63 acres of land, which is located north of Highway 20 and east of Alexandria Drive. The lots vary in size, measuring from 0.44 acres to 3.13 acres. Streets shown on the final plat will be dedicated to the city for public use upon approval of the final plat. Access shown through an extension of Morning Dove Drive, and also the connection of Grindstone Circle, to allow for future developments of the east. Subdivision ordinance requires that final plat submissions include such criteria as boundaries of properties, engineer's certificate, easement, and right-of-way with. All information has been submitted by the applicant. Final plat shows private building lines, property lines with dimensions, easements, and right-of-way with. The applicant has submitted a deed of dedication. Originally, the deed of ca- dedication, uh, was not, uh, adequate, but we have received a revised version of the deed of dedication, and it's just about completely there. Uh, there's a couple tweaks, and Engineering Department's gonna, I think they worked out earlier today at 2:30. So, we believe the deed of dedication is fine at this time. Uh, therefore, our staff recommends that the request for the final plat of Prairie Meadows Estates be approved for the following reasons. The plat is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance, and can be served by extension of existing utilities. The plat is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future language map, which classifies this area as residential. The plat will create an additional, uh, infill development site in the primary growth area. And subject to, um, and they've already solved this issue, but it was subject to the applicant submitting a deed of dedication that was generally consist, consistent with the deed of dedication of adjoining subdivisions. Are there any questions for staff?
And so, along those lines, are you comfortable with just removing that deed of dedication condition?
Well, I don't think it hurts anything to keep it there, um, I don't know that we've completely worked through the entire deed of dedication, but.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So, I'd leave that in there until we get it completely tweaked, and then actually signed, and.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, this is Gustafson, I have a question. I think we talked about this, um, one of the other times that this group came before us. My biggest concern with this whole layout is, um, lack of accessibility of getting out. Um, you know, God forbid that there is something that happens in that area, a huge fire or something else, and you have only two outlets for all of those homes. And there's got to be over 200 properties represented in this development. And to only have one way that you can get out, if the other one happened to be blocked or something, it just really, really concerns me that, um, that we don't, we haven't had the foresight, or we haven't made the developer put those access roads in now, before they build anything else.
Okay, yeah, that's a understandable, uh, point. I know that we're not requiring them now, and maybe Noel Eric can, can, uh, add to this, but I know as it continues to develop, there will be added, um, entrances, uh, to the site that'll make it more, uh, accessible during emergency situations.
But why are we waiting until later?
I mean, this is Anderson with staff, I mean, the short answer is, this is what the code requires. Um, and this is in the, the fire code, and the subdivision ordinance and all that, so they're doing everything legally, and this is kind of how, uh, faster-growing subdivision areas are developed, um, as you have basically kind of the, you're, you're developing from one side to the next. Um, we do have, uh, plans, as we continue to move forward with the developer and develop more land, um, that there would eventually be a, be a connection made over to Hess Road, and up to Crossroads Boulevard, even, um, crossing the, uh, the drainage way would be quite a feat, too. Um, but, uh, that will provide some more entrance, I mean, obviously, this is a little bit of a unique site in that with Highway 20 in close proximity to the south, there's going to be no accesses there at all. And it's a long ways away over to Hess Road. Um, so, you know, we're very happy to continue to work with them, and, and again, like I said, it, it meets, it meets the code. Obviously, uh, the developer has a lot more to lose in the city, um, as they develop through here, if, if something bad were to happen, so they don't want anything like that to happen either, and, and we're all moving ahead, knowing that, uh, this meets the codes, and there are other, other avenues planned in the future.
Um, my question is, is Sarah Drive the only access road, or is there another one that's not visible? Southbound, it goes out. Okay. Goes out this way. Okay, but that's it, then, Sarah Drive, southbound, that's it? That's it, that's it. That's a lot of houses and a lot of people, if we ever had to get them out quickly. And I, I see this happening throughout the city, not just in Waterloo, but in Cedar Falls, where you have huge complexes that are all built around one access point. And it's like, why would you want to do that to yourself? You know, because all you'd have to have is a big accident or something, and then have a fire, how are you going to get your fire people in, how are you going to get your ambulances in? It just doesn't seem like a thoughtful way to do business, but, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm just stating my frustration.
And that's part of our goal, as staff, you know, uh, planning and engineering staff, look at subdivisions. Um, we're always looking for future connections. Obviously, I'm glad this discussion came up, because as we move to develop more land, especially near existing subdivisions, we will inevitably get some homeowners that don't want the road extended that's been sitting there. I won't bring up any in particular, but there's some coming. And, uh, those roads were put there for a reason, and those roads were meant to be extended to provide the continuity and the uniformity through different subdivisions, through different residential times. to provide the continuity and the uniformity through different subdivisions, through different residential times and developments to allow for that, different entrances. So, um, I'm glad to hear you say that, 'cause obviously that's what staff is always pushing for as well. Um, and again, with this particular situation, without being able to go to the south, without being able to go to the north, at this particular location, 'cause right north of here, of course, is already developed.
Sure.
As we get to the next probably phase, um, of the, of this area out here, and obviously, we, we hope it goes well for the developer and they build, everything goes well for them. We get to the next phase, then we'll be looking at some of those other options, either to the east or to the north or both.
Well, I'm glad to hear that we're on the same page.
And I, I do think it's, there's a little bit of a chicken or the egg conundrum, 'cause generally the developer has to pay for the city streets and sewer, to be brought up to code for city streets and city sewer. That was the, Summerland Farm was the exception on that, but everything else, and it's a big, nobody would do it if you had to extend it right now all on that cornfield, you know, and you couldn't farm it as well, putting all those in. But if you don't do that, it comes up with the problem of somebody has a sub-street next to them and they wanna keep it that way, and they object to adding onto the road, it's just, you'll get yelled at either way. But I would do the same thing.
And Summerland's a good example of, of one where there was originally a, a road to the south that was supposed to go to that other subdivision. At some point, uh, that was approved without that, um, ultimately by the city council. Um, so that road was not put in, and as you saw, as they got to a certain point in the development, they could not build further houses out there without providing that second entrance. So they had to go back and change some plans because they had changed them from the, the part before, so... Again, we just gotta stick with what the subdivision ordinance says.
And so in the subdivision ordinance, is there a number, a quantity of houses before another access road is required?
It's actually in the fire code for the number of houses. I don't remember what it is, but I thought maybe Eric would. Um, I think it's like thirty.
Thirty for the second, there's a, another number before you'd have to go over to, and I don't know what that number is, but it's a fairly big number, I know, like several hundred, I think.
And this may not be a question that can answer, but on the fire codes, if those based on international suggestions of fire codes, 'cause I know those have been suggested down to the cities in our area, 'cause I've read some of those. Is that partly where this number, 'cause you look at older businesses and residential, there's a lot more access?
International fire code, I think, is what we've adopted, something like, it's, it's an international fire code, it's what we have.
So that, is that what these are based on?
I have a question regarding the plat. The outlot A to the north, uh, what's the purpose of that?
Uh, storm water detention.
Okay. There's no access, I just, yeah, that makes sense.
That's our storm water detention. They thought it was best to put it there as you have the commercial to the, to the north side. It may have made sense also from the topography and everything, too.
Thanks.
Uh, any further questions for staff? Do we have anybody here that would, in the audience, that would like to speak or against it? Okay, any further questions or comments?
I make the motion that we approve, as described by staff.
Okay, with the condition noted regarding the deed of dedication.
Second.
Movement seconded, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That then takes us to, uh, page forty-three. This is an encroachment agreement D one in our board packet. Um, and it's a request by Kurt Rose Company for an encroachment agreement to allow for the construction of a monument sign that'll encroach fifteen to twenty-five feet, fifteen feet into the twenty-five-foot plotted utility easement located at nine thirty Tower Park Drive. Well, Ken and Darryl with staff.
This is Andrew with staff. We did receive an updated site plan. There's just four of them there, so, uh, you may have to share with the person next to you, but, uh, the applicant was wishing to construct a monument sign, uh, that'd be two foot by four foot, forty-two inches deep. Uh, the sign was proposed to be located within a twenty-five-foot water main and storm sewer easement, and that sign would have been located between the two utilities. Uh, however, staff was concerned replacing the monument sign directly between the water main and storm sewer due to the limited amount of space to the north and south of the sign. Uh, there is no area parallel to the north lot line where there is not an easement. Uh, due to the concerns of placing the sign between the two utilities, uh, staff recommended that the location of the sign be moved southeast and adjacent to the overhead electrical line, if acceptable by Mid-American Energy Company. An encroachment agreement still needs to be signed and executed if the sign is located, um, within that, uh, overhead utility easement. Uh, the entire area was once right-of-way, vacated and sold for the Country Club Business Center addition to combine to the private land for more lot development. Uh, the vacate process retained the easements for the utility purposes, and was always assumed some use, parking area, et cetera, could be utilized this vacate, within this vacated area. Uh, this is one of the reasons the buildings are set back further on the lots, prompting the request to put signage closer to West San Martin Drive. Uh, also, at the recent Technical Review Committee on the twenty-eighth of October, uh, Water, Water Works and the Engineering Department expressed, uh, their opposition to the encroachment within that twenty-five-foot water main and storm sewer easement. Uh, staff has contacted Mid-American Energy Company, making them aware that there is an interest in locating the sign in that overhead electrical easement to the south and east of the original location. Uh, Mid-American noted that it may not be an issue. However, their Transmission Department, uh, would have to review the location as well as the height of the monument sign to see if it could interfere with nearby overhead wires. Uh, staff is recommending that the request for an encroachment agreement at nine thirty Tower Park Drive, uh, within the overhead utility easement be approved for the following reasons. The request will not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. Uh, the sign would appear to have good visibility if moved to the south and east of the originally proposed location within the fifty-foot overhead easement. And with the conditions that a signed and executed encroachment agreement be done, and that the applicant move the proposed location of the sign to the southeast of the originally proposed location, uh, located just east of the water detention area and north of the existing overhead electric line, if deemed acceptable by Mid-American Energy. So, uh, I did hand out the updated site plan I received earlier today. Uh, the area I circled in blue, it was the original proposed location within that water main and storm sewer easement. Uh, the applicant in, or the sign is shown in red there where they are proposing to move it to. Uh, I did talk to the gentleman, uh, from Mid-American Energy Company. Um, he did say he's, he's been unable to catch his boss today, so, uh, we're still waiting on an answer from that. The biggest concern, or one of them they had, was how far it'd be from that utility pole, just located east of the proposed location there, and it's approximately about thirty-five feet. So, um, we are recommending approval with the condition that Mid-American accept that, so, um, they could come back and say they don't approve of that, so...
And questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Thorne Sperry. I, to me, the, the wording, oh gosh, what happened to it, is not, uh, strong enough, deemed necess- deemed appropriate. And I'd like to change it to, um, this is the conditions on page forty-six, the second one. And it's, uh, located just east of the water detention area and north of the existing overhead electric line, if Mid-American Energy provides written approval to this proposed location.
I'll make a comment, too. I was involved in the, uh, the sale and, and of this property. I, I talked with Eric about it, I, uh, probably abstention probably be appropriate for this, I'm not...
Be careful.
I know.
Don't go in the audience, please.
It's not an attorney, it has different ethics rules.
I saw that.
No, I understand other rules. I just think George does lose me upside either way. Um, all right, so you, you can abstain on that. And is there anybody on the, uh, in the audience that was here that would like to speak for or against it? Or, it's a question, it's a standard, too, so...
With Kurt Rose Company, and then speak the owner. They have no problem about relocating the, uh, sign to the, uh, alternate location, tucking it back in the corner. This is a lower, a smaller monument sign. The primary sign is actually in the corner of San Martin and Amesboro, and with, they'll have the message board in that. We checked signage requirements, we're all within the, well within the limits of allowable square footage for signage, so... And we are north of the, uh, the northernmost wires for there, so we're beyond that. Hopefully, we won't have any questions with Mid-American.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions along commission members?
Was there a second to Leah's recommendation?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I haven't made a recommendation.
Oh, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
It was the last one.
No.
Yeah.
Um, okay, any further questions for staff or anything like that? All right, hearing none, it would entertain a motion on this. Jerry, do you wanna maybe make the motion over there?
I move that we approve the request for the encroachment agreement, for an encroachment agreement located at nine three zero Tower Park Drive be approved, and with the following conditions. One, a signed and executed encroachment agreement is... Executed? Two, that the applicant move the proposed location of the sign to the southeast of the originally proposed location, located just east of the water detention area and north of the existing overhead electric line, and that we receive from Mid-American Energy a written approval of this proposed location.
Thank you. Now, there's motion in a second.
Second.
Okay. And movement seconded, any further discussion? Run commission. All, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The chair votes aye, motion carried.
One obsession.
No, I'm sorry, with one abstention, excuse me.
Thank you.
All right, um, and that takes us, I, I think that finishes our action items on the agenda. Thank you.
No, these are action items, too.
Oh, these are action items, excuse me. Um, these are, we've got two more items on the agenda, um, to amend, um, and restate the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. And the second one, which we get to, is for the Downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal Development Plan. So these are proposed by the city planning and zoning, um, community planning and development departments. With this, we'll hear from, uh, the city planner, Eric Schrader.
This is Schrader with staff. I'll be brief, and I'll also talk about both of them, 'cause they're very similar. Um, you can certainly act on them separate if you want, or act on them together if you want, but we are proposing to amend and restate the Crossroads TIF and the Downtown TIF. Um, we are making some wording changes throughout the plan, nothing substantive. Uh, it, it changed some wording of a few projects and then changed some, uh, wording of how the plan flows and refers back between the budget section and the, uh, general, uh, comments section. That was based on opinions from the city attorney's office to just make sure that the document flows well. Because we're wording it as a amended and restated plan, it was thought best that we do bring it back before the Planning and Zoning Commission, 'cause it's essentially like we're, uh, reapproving it from anew. There, with the, uh, downtown plan, there's no boundary change. With the crossroads one, there's essentially no boundary change, other than a m- minor tweak, uh, where it, uh, where the boundary goes down, a waterway behind, uh, crossroads there. There was a spot where how it was described before, before split through a parcel, and the code doesn't allow the TIF boundary to split a parcel, so we had to slightly tweak it. But it, there, there's no substantive, uh, change in boundary in either request, so... Any questions for staff?
Yes. Um, this is Thorne Sperry. It says in here that you added a new project, which is?
For the downtown, uh, uh, one, that was the, um...
Actually, for the downtown one, we just had to add a funding source. It was for the TechWorks project, um, to reflect that we were gonna issue twelve point seven five million dollars in, uh, city geo-bonds for that project.
So there is no new project in the downtown one?
No, just an update on the, the funding.
And for the crossroads, it was the hotel project.
Okay, so...
They, they still count it as a new project since you're changing it, since you're changing the funding or adding a project.
It's, it's considered that, okay. So then, these are filed, recorded, these documents are recorded. So you address this as, and this is clarification, I don't know, as the, for example, the restated crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan. And then you say in your cover letter, and TIF district. Does and TIF district have to be a part of this document in the title to make it really correct? Since it's recorded that way?
The, no, the, the plan is what essentially creates the TIF district, but the plan is adopted, it's, it's kind of confusing and complicated. But the plan gets adopted by, um, resolute, I gotta remember which one's which, resolution of the city council, and the TIF district gets adopted by ordinance of the city council.
Not to nitpick, but what, in your cover letter, you say that you are doing something with the TIF district.
It's essentially being re-adopted.
Even though we don't have any documentation about the TIF district other than the few paragraphs that's, talks about in the plan, saying where the tax increment financing is coming from?
Yeah, that's all a TIF district from this legal document standpoint is, is referenced in the plan and then a map and a legal description, which is also in the plan. So there isn't any other component to the TIF district that's not included in what you've got right here.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, um, in the downtown proposal, um, my question is, why is the Grouse Museum District, um, put in here when that is not the Waterloo City Holdings?
Um, well, there's lots of private property that are included in the TIF district that aren't city holdings, but the, uh, Grouse Museum was actually, um, there, there was an amendment. It was, I don't know the exact year, it was around the same time that the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan was being enacted. They did an amendment to the Downtown TIF to add those, I think it's two and three blocks, the main Grouse block, the park, and the, was it the Imaginarium, um, were expanded. There was some thought process that based on, there, there, there was originally planned as part of the, um, Vision Iowa Grant, that there was going to be improvements to the Grouse Museum through that. That ended up not happening, um, and I, I think other funding sources were utilized, but had that happened, they were going to use TIF financing, uh, as part of that, but it's never been removed back out of the TIF since that amendment.
Well, I guess my question is, is that why are we spending urban renewal money on a private institution that is not owned by the city? I mean, the YWCA is looking at doing, you know, a huge expansion. Why aren't they helping the YW?
Mm-hmm. Well, and we're not helping them. There wa- I mean, and Noel can maybe speak to this. I know there was a plan back when it was added into the TIF district, but that never happened, and no incentive, uh, package using TIF incentives was provided. The, um, Grouse Museum is tax-exempt, so it doesn't affect the TIF district from a tax-based standpoint. The TIF district works to collect tax, uh, tax increment. So you, you've got a, a frozen base that continues to be taxed normally and spread through the taxing entities normally, and any increased value goes into the TIF district. Because it's a tax-exempt entity, there's no increased taxable value there, so...
So why is it included?
Tip, the, the, the plan is, is meant to be all-inclusive. Um, with the new state law, if you're gonna have a project you work on in there, you should have it included in the plan. So I, honestly, if, if they wanna do some kind of improvements on the Grouse Museum building, district, campus, that may involve the city doing something, it's in our best interest to have it in the plan. Even though it may or may not happen, that'll be up to city council approval ultimately through a development agreement to a public project or something like that. Uh, but we've tried to be all-inclusive of all the aspects and components of what we think we may wanna work on in these areas.
I just want us to be consistent.
Mm-hmm. At, at one point, the YW was looking at, uh, potential city lots in their area. At one point, the YW was looking at potential city lots in their area, they expanded depending upon how their project would move ahead. So, that could have involved some city land. We would have shown that in this chart as a city contribution because of the value of the land and things like that, so if that had been moving forward when we last updated the plan, you probably would have seen something in here. And again, even though it doesn't look like that's going to occur, well, it can occur now with John Roof building on that parking lot, but there was a potential for that to be in here as well. So, there's always possibilities, and honestly, the city's always willing to look and try and help out with projects and with things that'll make the community a better place.
Sure. The only thing is, and the reason that I bring it up is that when normal Joe taxpayer reads these kinds of things, it's confusing because it makes it sound like the Grouse Museum is part of the city of Waterloo. And because they don't have, you know, necessarily the insight and the ability to ask questions, you know, they take that away as, you know, well, you know, they lost their bond issue for their funding, and so this is another way of slipping in underneath the door.
Sure, but there would be lots of other nonprofit exempt entities that are in the existing TIF districts, and just because they're in the TIF district doesn't mean they're getting any sort of incentive, but just because they're tax exempt doesn't mean that the city couldn't work with them. Another example would be the Human Services Campus addition, Food Bank, Correction Facility, and Operation Threshold is in the Rath Urban Renewal and TIF District, and the city did participate in property acquisition to clearing some of that site for them.
I think what Carol said, I can see it for the average person, it might look confusing because you know this to be true and we're learning this to be true, but I think sometimes that's why you're reading the call in the courier, they'll see something like, well, how come this is there? And then you find out there's more information. I think that's what you're saying, so that somebody questions it, yeah, you don't, you get a little more community support, is that what I'm saying? Till they understand where it's going. So, that's what I took away from it, but yeah, sometimes come in the commission, you learn a lot more, but before you come on the mission, you wouldn't know this, you just see what you read in the paper, or you just hear what Joe Blow says down the street, and then it gets confusing. Now, does that take in that Grouse, is that strictly a museum, or is that the homes around there? That Grouse, what's this Grouse Museum District, is that with the homes surrounding it? Because there's a lot of rentals and.
The map on page one hundred, it is that, it is that very bottom part that kind of juts out south of the Highway two eighteen, so it's that three-block area. So, it really takes in the Grouse Museum, Washington Park, and then the Imaginarium block, which includes the Russell Lamson.
And as I understand it, I think the park was only included to make it kind of a contiguous, you know, not a, two jut outs, not contiguous to each other for the two Grouse sites.
Eric's the one that has to write those legal descriptions, so.
Any further questions or discussion on either one of these? Okay, hearing that, so the recommended motion from staff is that we approve both, and this goes on in the city council?
Yes.
Or review. Would it be best to do this separately?
Yes.
Okay. And so, the motion, I guess would be to simply approve what we've got in our agenda, right, to amend and restate?
Yes.
Okay. So, could we get a motion, and I guess just making this affirmatively, to approve the request of the city Waterloo to amend and restate the Crossroads Waterloo Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion and in favor is to vote for at the Senate City Council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye. Okay, then for the second, I guess entertain a motion to approve the request of the city Waterloo to amend and restate Downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan.
I move that we amend, restate the Downtown Waterloo Riverfront Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan.
Second. Approve that request in second.
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Then we've got three discussion items, and Jerry, I'll turn it over to you, I think. For the first one, I had the future schedule in November meeting.
Yes. Today's election day, and there's a lot going on, and I think we should make it a part of our operating rules that the November meeting is not held on Election Day going forward in the future. And I don't know how we codify that, but it just seems like it's such an important day and things to do.
So, Schrader with staff, I would say we may want to do an amendment to the administrative rules, which we probably need to bring back at a future meeting of the commission. The only minor complication I see is, you know, the easiest is going to be to move that to the second Tuesday in November. On occasion, the second Tuesday of November is going to fall on a legal holiday for the city like this year would have, so that's going to create a complicator. Moving it to the third Tuesday does not work because the community development meets here at the exact same time, so, I mean, we'll either have to, on years that the second Tuesday is a legal holiday, we'd either have to go ahead and have that one still be on the first Tuesday, even though it's going to be voting day, or pick some sort of alternative date and/or time.
We'll look at that. I mean, typically, we try to look ahead at the calendar for any holidays and things like that, because obviously, again, if we have a Monday holiday even, then a lot of times the council will move theirs to Tuesday, and for some reason, they get, you know, authority over us, since it's the council chambers. So, we'll move meetings, and so we'll try to look at the calendar coming up and shoot those dates out to everybody well in advance and see where it ends up and what we can do.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing I had was about, somehow our, the work we do here is really important, and sometimes we get kind of balled up, and having a representative from the city attorney's office, I think, is getting more and more critical. It might not be for every meeting, but when there's issues that may be contentious, that I think it would serve as well to have a representative from the attorney's office supporting us.
We can make that request.
Yeah. I would agree completely. And that, I guess to piggyback on that, kind of what I had thought about was, yeah, how we don't get in this situation like the last meeting, because it was just, I think it was awkward for everybody. And the last few meeting, I know it was for me with the abstaining and all that, and what do you do, how do you, does it mean you can't participate, you've got to leave or not by serving on the commission? And so, it kind of tied me up in that, and I know on the commission, even beyond that, it seems like our last few meetings, we've had a lot of controversial matters, and so I always reminisce about the good old days when I got on this commission, we would have like half-hour meetings.
Right.
And I think that's when the economy was bad, and nobody was developing anything.
We saw too much going on, yeah, too many good things.
It's good that there's development, I mean, that's what we want as a city and to grow the tax base and all that, but it seems like we've had a lot, you know, we had, I think we had six city council members here at our last meeting, and so, and I had some questions on kind of what.
We did check on that as well, that was fine, as long as they're here, not talking to each other and representing their interests.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were even, we did check on if they want to get up and speak, they are fully allowed to do that, even on things that are going to the city council, and they'll be going on. The attorney said that that is fine, that's their right, so.
Yeah. And so, that's where I thought if we just took a timeout, and it would be adding an extra meeting that we'd have to do, but it could be a public meeting that could be televised, just to go through and ask all those questions, like I've got. And like I said, city staff did a great job when I got on the commission, it's just, it probably takes a while being on the commission and seeing the action to realize kind of what questions you've got, because some of those I didn't know.
I think that's excellent, and having it televised would inform the public too, you know.
Because some of it too is, obviously, there are major differences for what we're acting on here. A rezone is very different, I think we take into account a lot more, and then whatever action we take make, has a much bigger impact on the city council, the supermajority and all that. But then, some of these are special, for instance, the plat, it took me to figuring it out with Nottingham then, I didn't realize that, that it doesn't really, it doesn't have any.
It's a recommendation.
Basic effect, it's just a recommendation, but it's still, even if you vote for deny, it's still just requires a majority like it would, so.
And I know, I know University, Iowa State University Extension has done it before, so we'll probably contact them first to see if they have a kind of a standard program, because that's the thing too, is, you know, as a commission as well, you know, I know the city council does rely, we would prefer to have a more of a dialogue-type meeting here than at city council, because we're better set up for it here, obviously, with the staff. The other thing is, when you get into more technical documents, you know, a rezoning, there's a zoning ordinance, there's standards, but they are usually looking to change something, so there's differences of opinion. When you get into some more of the plat documents that are a little more technical in nature, a lot of times, if you're going to get a planning commission that's going to recommend denial or approval or whatever, we maybe want to be looking at, specifically in denials, specific reasons why we believe it does not meet the requirements of the ordinance in particular, so that'll be something that they would address in the training too.
Yeah, and another part of that, I think would be really important, is stormwater management now, I mean, the issues that we dealt with in Summerland and others, and so it's a new game in town with water quality being such an issue for the state.
And what to watch for, because Summerland, it sounds like that was totally different.
And not to get you all too excited, because I know you'll all want to be on this, but we are, you know, we just kind of overhauled the zoning ordinance, I think, about a year ago. We are looking at the subdivision ordinance, I think the majority of it was adopted back in nineteen seventy-eight, so there's some new wording we'd like to put in in regards to sidewalk requirements, things like that, but other things, Summerland brings up, we're going to be changing some of the requirements for when private streets are probably allowed versus public streets for better setups there. Stormwater management's obviously required now, so we'll probably be looking for kind of a subcommittee group that we did like we did with the zoning ordinance for the subdivision ordinance at some point, to where we'll meet, we'll go over suggested changes, you can have input before we finally bring it back to the full commission for recommended changes.
Noel, I have a question along that line, because it said, one of the things that's been really sticky is that you've got these developments, they're owned privately, but they have to follow city ordinances, versus is there a point in time when is that they have to be annexed onto the city to be totally city? Because that's where it seems a problem is, you've got developers that purchase the land, they develop it, they have to follow city codes, but they're ultimately responsible for it, that's why in the Summerland, it went through bankruptcies, you get the switch of owners, things are getting taken care of, is there something that they're looking for?
And Summerland's kind of the weirdest, or the worst-case scenario, I guess I would call it, because I'm not even sure that they did anything wrong out there, other than it took them a lot longer to do it. So, they may have very well built everything a hundred percent correct as to how it was supposed to be done. The problem was, when it took so long to develop, some of those things were not properly maintained, so you had some shifting of, you know, I know they had one fire hydrant at one point that was buried because it was next to a hillside. Well, it wasn't planted with grass and maintained, so erosion occurred, filled that in, probably changed some of the slopes out there. Water tends to find its own way when it's not properly directed, so that one was kind of a worst-case scenario, but again, they could have done everything correctly. Then when it took so long and changed hands and just wasn't properly maintained, now the present owners have to kind of go back and maybe fix some things. And again, maybe some things weren't done correctly either. I don't go out and inspect it myself afterwards, you know, we have staff that does that, but generally, when, anytime they're developing land, there's certain ways that they have to design it, they have to do lot layouts, street layouts, there's a, you know, another thing is, is a street length of a dead end, you can only have cul-de-sac so long, so there's a lot of details in the subdivision ordinance that, if you're on the subcommittee, especially, or even when we update it, it'll be fun for you guys probably to learn some more about that.
I like it, because I wonder, is there a point in time where that has to be turned over to the city? I guess my question is, what is the difference between if, like, so that's completely city-maintained versus you, the developer, have to be responsible?
In terms of the public infrastructure, I mean, the majority of them are built with public streets. Summerland was kind of a unique one where they wanted to do, you know, there's a lot of private streets, but they're more in kind of the condo setups, and they're normally shorter segments that look more like driveways because they want to put things off them. Summerland was probably one of the few ones, the other one I can think of is South Fork over there on Shallows to the west of the golf course, that are actually private streets with more of a single-family home layout. You know, we will have public easements over, because a lot of the water mains and sewer mains are still public under them, but the roads themselves are private, and that's one of the things we'd like to change is, is moving ahead, we think it's a lot better standard to have public streets for long-term maintenance and continuity. I know the South Fork one, they specifically built it that way, because at one point, they talked about potentially making it a gated community, that obviously has not happened yet, but they could do that since they're private streets there, but that'll be one of the things we want to address is, we believe it could be difficult, especially, again, going back to like Summerland, right now, if you went out and looked at the Summerland plat, there is a road segment that goes to the west that's not built, but it's reserved for if someone developed that forty acres to the west, so we could get a road connection to that. It gets a little more difficult when they're private streets, and someone else wants to develop here, what if they want to put in public streets? Now, you're going to have people that don't want you driving from Dizert through their public streets to get to more public streets.
Or does the city have to follow the private streets to get to the private street?
We're going to try to address that based on newer standards, we've seen in newer subdivision ordinances.
Well, yeah, in this discussion, I just brought up, I, well, we're already through November, December might be busy, but if it gets to January and things start to quiet down a little bit, I just, February, hopefully. And said, hopefully, things will quiet down for our sake, but I guess it's good if there's development going on with the city, so. Anything further? Any discussion? Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, motion carried, thank you all.